Okay, good morning. It's Monday, August tenth, two thousand twenty, nine AM. This is the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to review the agenda.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Nathan and a second by Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Santos? Okay, I have Santos. Thank you. Item number three is discussion of possible action to approve claims dated August tenth, two thousand twenty, in the amount of eight hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and eight cents.
I would move to approve.
Have motion by Scott. Second by Doug. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, item number four, items with Mike Nolan of Horizon Architecture. Mike, I think you're on the line this morning, correct?
Good day, everyone. Everybody hear me okay?
Yep. Okay, Mike, the first act- item is discussion of possible action to approve change order number four, Muscatine County Maintenance Facility Project in the amount of three thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-four cents.
Excellent. So, it is essentially a cleanup item from earlier in the project. Um, I believe we probably discussed this back in November. There was some ambiguity on plan between the structural and the architecturals. Um, I think the architectural that indicated six-inch metal studs between the bays and then for the large tall walls. After discussing with the contractor, we felt that from a schedule standpoint and then just from a basically general execution, it was going to be easier to change those to a two-by-six stud wall. Uh, so essentially what we're seeing here is that changed. It took a little while to process as there were two different trades involved with the metal studs versus the wood studs. Uh, but essentially we got credit back for the metal studs and then a little bit additional for the work on the wood studs. Ultimately, we decided that this was a better way to go to keep everything on schedule and keep things moving and also to tie the structural system together. There's also a few structural modifications or just additional that the city requested, uh, for some sheer ties, excuse me, on the end walls. So essentially, we're just doing some cleanup items back in November with this change order.
Yeah, I remember you talking a little bit about some sheer wall issues and stuff. Okay.
I do have a question. What was the original date that we were supposed to have occupancy on that property?
We didn't set a firm date. Uh, the original, the, the goal was to be into the property by the end of April, early May. Um, obviously with the shutdown, various things going on, both the Illinois and Iowa side extended a little bit. Uh, we did issue the temporary, um, certificate of occupancy, I believe, two weeks back. So, uh, currently the situation is we're still waiting on, uh, fire alarm final approval and the handrails to get a final occupancy, but the city has essentially agreed to allow us to start to move in. So currently, maintenance is moving things over into the building right now.
The, the fire system was, that was not under the general, was it? That was us? Or was that under the general?
We had them install the system. Yeah, so this was part of the, uh, um, the countywide, essentially, after we started this project, we had discussion of standardizing systems across the county. So we pulled out the original fire, the system, which is essentially just a smoke alarm setup to do a full, um, fire protection panel, which has smoke detection, uh, you know, the, the central command, all that good stuff. So we did an owner-earned contractor install. Uh, at this point, everything has been installed. It's just a matter of coordinating to get the contracts in place for the service and that's been something that it's been a little challenging to get Johnson Controls to get all the appropriate paperwork there. I think we had that settled as of this week. So we just need to get Johnson Controls scheduled there to be on site when they do the testing for the system. Um, and we should be fine with that.
So, so the, you know, basically, we've just got a, uh, it, it's final approval or final checkout of the system? Is that what we're saying, Mike?
That's essentially it. Yeah, to issue the final occupancy, the city has that outstanding item and then getting the handrails installed on the exterior ramp.
And, and my understanding is the handrails are here, correct?
Uh, that's my understanding as well. Uh, they were supposed to have been installed end of last week. I called with Keegan this morning. If not, they will be installed this week.
Okay.
Excuse me. We're still waiting on confirmation that they scanned the fiber between the courthouse and the maintenance building to verify that it was what it should be. So we don't have network capabilities yet in that building.
So, did you hear that, Mike?
So I already heard that, Bill. So, Bill, you're still waiting on the, uh, the testing data from the electrical contractor, is that correct?
Correct, for the fiber connection.
Yeah, okay. I'll follow that up as well. I know that was requested without error.
Okay. So I'd look for a motion or is there more discussion on this change order?
I'll move approve.
I have a motion by Nathan.
I'll second.
Second by Scott. Is there any more discussion on the change order? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we had all ayes, so motion carries. Uh, item number B is discussion of possible ac- oh, action? Acceptance of plans and specifications to let, for the bid to the Muscatine County Jail Hot Water System Upgrade Project.
Yes, you should have three items. With this, you have the plans as prepared by Acxiom Consultants, the specifications, and the official cost of the project budget. Uh, essentially, this is in response to, um, back in the late winter, uh, we had a few comments that were passed along to us by the jail administrators, essentially hot water was not in sufficient quantity uh, or, or supplied at some of the, the locations where it was required. So we had Acxiom come and do a study to determine the loads and after looking at that, determined that, um, essentially, we didn't have enough distribution capacity in the current system to keep up with demand at peak demand. So with this, it's doing essentially bolstering and upgrading the existing boiler system and storage system to provide adequate hot water for peak demands, given all of the, uh, the fixtures and the counter we had in place. Uh, with the overall opinion of cost, it's underneath the bidding threshold of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, or one hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars. So what we'd like to do is just let this to three, uh, contractors for basically to get through bids and take the lowest response of bid off of that rather than doing the full public bidding process.
So, uh, if our opinion of probable cost is below a certain threshold, then we can do that? That's correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I want to add that there's a huge boiler with the jail that we've had trouble with it leaking. So Oscar wanted to get this moving before that boiler fails and then we have a huge issue over there, so. And this is in the budget for this year. This is a budget item.
So I have a motion by Scott.
Second.
Second by Nathan.
One, one question though. Um, Mike, do we know if this is projected to do our, to our energy bills, improve them, make them higher?
Uh, and my assumption is that we have a, so right now what we're having to do is basically open a path to try and run hot water to get some of the more distant parts of the jail. So you're just, have a lot of water running down the drain. Literally. Uh, with the goal of this distribution system, and I understand it is to make sure that we have demand and we also have supply so that we're not going to be wasting that water. So that would be one of that bid. Uh, there's currently some electric storage tanks and some antiquated systems. You can see that if you get a chance to dig through it, essentially, we're going to be bolstering with new, uh, new boiler systems. The boiler is going to be a more efficient way of heating the water. Uh, I can't guarantee it's going to be a big savings one way or the other, but the overall goal of this project by providing water when it's needed and then providing it in appropriate temperatures and quantities through a more efficient system, uh, that we should be in better shape. This is going to take out some of the older, uh, old storage tanks, uh, we've had in it. So again, it's hard to quantify, but yes, this should be an overall net positive.
Great, thank you.
Is this primarily in the ninety-five jail? Is it, or is this, we kind of co-mingled the systems when we added the jail?
There is a large storage tank that's in the, in the later jail. Um, this particular of the plans are going to take advantage of the mechanical space in the older portion of the jail, which is where the primary distribution, the primary, uh, problem areas for the water are, which I think is around the cell block, one or two hundred areas.
So, Mike, I got a question. This is Santos. You know, we're, we're demoing the five-hundred gallon storage tank, but then we're replacing another one of them. What am I understanding is with the, the newer one or, or, I don't understand the...
Yes, there's a large five-hundred gallon storage tank that we can't have over and right now. That's, that's basically the, the obsolete piece of equipment. I think at one point, it was actually a heater and, uh, storage tank. The heating is since not used there anymore. So I'm talking with Joe. His recommendation was, let's get rid of that storage tank. We'll add two smaller tanks. So essentially, we'll be able to, since the problem wasn't necessarily the amount of water, it's just where it was, how it's getting circulated. So we're heating up a big pot of water and it's essentially getting cooled off. So we're having to continue to reheat that when we're doing that. Uh, so based off of the demand in the location, the better approach, more efficient approach was to replace that with smaller, more efficient heat.
And they're probably going to be piped up series so they can heat up each other or, or how would that be?
I, I would, um, I would have to ask Joe and I can get you in touch with him to get the technicals. My understanding when we walk through was that you would have, the boiler would do the primary heavy lifting and heating the water. And then once it gets cut into the tank, the tank does have a reheat function on it. Uh, so essentially, we're going to do the heavy lifting of heating with the boiler and then from the tanks, it would take as need be, but if you needed to rapidly replenish the hot water, that would, the boiler would be doing majority of that work.
Okay. On, on this piping, most of this, majority of this piping is indoors. I, I think it's only the, the bed piping is the only one that goes out, outdoors?
Again, I'd have to ask Joe to be specific on that, but if this is all the work itself is inside the mechanical room. Yes, this is all indoors, to my understanding. But a lot of the, I think it's outside. I think it's all geothermal related.
Okay. So I'm, I'm giving, uh, you make your motion, I'll second that motion.
We had a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion? Got all your questions, Santos?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose the same? Motion carries. Okay, item number four C is an update on the jail roof replacement project.
Okay, um, so we are, as we talked about, we are under contract for that with Jim Geis Commercial Roofing. Uh, they're getting their, uh, stuff together. Should be seeing some middle on that. Their plan is to start probably towards the end of this month, uh, which is fine with the schedule. We'll definitely get this work done before we get into the worst part of the weather season. You will see that we have one item that, uh, the county is going to, it was basically going to walk through. We discovered we needed to add the additional two and a half inches of insulation on the lower portion of the roof. There's two valves in the geothermal system that are currently at about rooftop level. So those valves need to be raised. Seems like a fairly simple project until you throw geothermal onto it. Um, so now it gets a little more complex. What you have here is the proposal from Crawford to provide that service. Uh, essentially, what's involved here is they have to isolate, drain down the system temporarily, move the valves, re-energize the system and then basically, uh, make sure everything is up and running again. That's why it seems like it's a little costly for a couple of valves on the rooftop. Uh, but essentially, they'll get those up and out of the way so the roofers can come and get their work done, um, underneath that.
Is that going to be a permanent relocation, Mike, or are they, is that something we'll have to move them back down? They're, they're moving them to a new location essentially and giving us...
Uh, no, great. And so if you look at it right now, there's probably about a four to six-inch, uh, pipe stub sticking out of the bottom of the pipes, either bolt on the bottom of the geo-pipe. What we'll do is we'll just essentially shorten that extension as much as we can so we can put the new insulation under it. So there's room to move them. They just, it's, it's a, it's a very simple part. It's just unfortunately a labor procedure to get it done.
Okay.
And I will note, we have, this is a separate agenda item after Mike's stuff, so wait and have you...
Oh, yeah, we have that on the, we have that as an action item on, uh, after you're done, Mike. So there's no action on this one right now. Uh, anything else on the jail roof replacement?
Yeah, I got a question though. Mike, um, on that roof, we have a, we have some aluminum grounding cables that run about everywhere on that roof?
Yes.
Um, is there any possibility that we, we review that because is that a, a common practice on roofs like that? I don't think I've seen that, that we have to run that grounding and then now we're probably going to need to go back, put the new roofing on and then we're going to have to glue these, these clamps, hundreds of them all over the roof versus having a, a normal grounding system where we run ground rot all the way down the bedrock and then running the, the copper cables over the infrastructure.
Right. So this is, uh, what you're referring to is the, the lightning protection system, um, for the building. So...
Well, it's, it's like grounding, grounding the vents, the blowers, the, you know, the, the AC units. I mean, it's, it's everything on that system up on that roof.
Right. Yes, absolutely. This is something that we looked at during design and tried to do some research to see. Um, you know, lightning protection systems aren't something you'll see on every building. Um, and I debated whether it was something we should suggest taking off of this building. Uh, my concern would be if it's an emission-critical facility like this, if you did get even a minor lighting strike, it took out a small portion of the electrical system, um, that's, that's a pretty big deal depending on where it went. So, yeah, it is fairly extensive and it is touching every piece of metal on the roof, more or less. Uh, but I think that's intentional, um, to protect any of the, all the electrical systems. It's more like a self-dispenders approach. Now, you're going to have your typical grounding that's going to, um, you know, go for your electrical system, whichever building is going to have the lighting protection just one level above and beyond. Um, talking with the rooper, we will take those off. They will get adhered back to the surface when we finish up with it. So I, I would have a hard time recommending that we not put that back yet. Um...
And, and that's not what I'm getting at. I'm just, I'm just asking, is there, is there other ways of maybe, uh, reviewing how we would have lightning protection versus running a bunch of aluminum cables and hundreds of little brackets that are going to go over the new, new EPM that we're going to be putting up on the roof? That, you know, my question is, does that, does that void any warranty? Or does that have any, any concerns from the rooper saying, hey, well, now that potentially produces more areas of, of, uh, potential leaks? I don't know. I, I, I guess, I guess I'm looking at, is there other ways we could possibly, uh, maybe still provide lightning protection versus putting all of those, uh, connections back on the roof, which may be an electrical question versus it might be a roofing question. The rooper is going to do whatever we ask them to do. But, but my concern is that if we put that right back on, um, does that really help us other than we're just adding? Basically, all they're doing is glue those underneath with some sort of a epoxy or some sort of a glue and then it adheres to the new EPM, which is designed to stretch once the heat gets on them.
So... So the basic system would be a, a probably more of a silicon or a roof-based product. It's not, it's not a warranty voiding detail. Uh, but I will certainly ask, I'll reach out and talk to my electrical engineers and see if they have any input. Again, the goal with this was to review what we had in place. Uh, but if you want me to look at some options, just kind of come back with some budget numbers on options that you might think that.
I, I mean, from my perspective, I think it's at least worth looking into versus just say, we're going to go back and take out the system that we, we have up there because, I mean, beyond just being trip hazards everywhere, um, they're, they're just, uh, something that I've never seen on, on type of a lightning protection would normally have, uh, ground rods that would normally all the way down to the bedrock, which I believe is approved in, in lightning grounding protection versus what we have. So, that's all I have.
So, so I'm clear. Are, Santos, are you asking Mike to, to essentially do another project for us?
No, I'm just asking to review if there's options for better grounding on this new roof versus what we have now. And then bring that to us and at least let us review that because if, if, if we go back in and putting that thing grounding system, I mean, you're talking hundreds and hundreds of, of aluminum cable that's going to be grounded laying over the new roofs that we're putting down. Um, and I just want to know if there's other options for better grounding than what we have in place now.
And Mike, is, would that investigation be something that you would charge us separately for?
Uh, no, at this time, I can ask questions. I don't see any need for any additional fee for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else on the roof? I think that's it on the roof, it sounds like. Mike, how about an update on the sheriff's deputy's office addition?
Yeah, you bet. All right. We are finally getting moving on that pretty good. So, um, we have, as of, I'm trying to pull up my schedule here. Um, as of last week, the foundation walls are completed and the, uh, basement floor was framed and they were backfilling, herping for, for concrete slabs. What you can expect to see for this week, um, let me look at my schedule here, is we're going to see the concrete floor slabs starting to go in. So we'll get everything concreted around for the interior portions of the building. Um, demolition tying to the existing building will happen next. So that's going to be, uh, putting the hole through, uh, for the new doorway, opening that up. And then for the rest of the month, really towards the end, we're scheduling right now as we should start to see the, uh, the shell of the building and the exterior framing go up pretty quick. The, uh, the walls are being panelized, so those should be on site. And from that point, we were going to have, until the exterior shell erupts in or dries into the roof, it's probably going to take towards the middle end of September. Uh, and after that point, you'll start to see trades getting, and they're pretty hot and heavy to get that project completed. Currently, the last portion of the project is said to be completed towards the middle of November. Um, and that's just going to be more of doing the insulated metal panels around the exterior and, and a good portion of that works on the existing building. And the goal will be to get dried in, uh, definitely before the winter weather comes and wrap that up probably towards. So at this point, things take along pretty good. Not on wood. Uh, we should be finished that project by early December.
Mike, I, I looked at those bits that you assigned a while back and, and I think it might have been two weeks back from the start of that footing. And, and I really, I really appreciate the fact that when we first looked at it, I was questioning some of those areas and I, it looked like there might have been some foundation, maybe, maybe, I don't know, maybe needing some vibrating, ed power or whatever. And, you know, the very next set of entries I see are all the repairs that you're having to do. So that made me feel really good that, that I know we're going to have good footings on that foundation for the expansion that you're doing up there. So I appreciate that.
And I was, um, I'm glad you had a chance. What happened, essentially, what happened was they had a, there was an issue, a mechanical issue with one of the trucks there in the core, which, uh, if you look back at some of the pictures, there was a line visible in the foundation walls, uh, from the core. So when you have a situation like that, they tried to vibrate as best they could, but the lower core unfortunately set up a little quicker. So we had them do, uh, just for information purposes, to come back, check to everything out from that, that seam down to where the, the concrete was actually, um, intact, which was, you know, like a couple inches deep at that. And we had them come back with a, yes, cementitious topping, basically a topping filler for that. So the, um, the structural integrity of the wall was never really an issue as much as the cosmetics, but, uh, we didn't have any problems. Myers said, yep, that was an issue, holding care of it. So they did great work with to get these things going.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the sheriff's office? Anything else from Mike this morning? We've got, Mike, we're going to talk about the Crawford geothermal thing next.
Okay, Gal, I'll sit down.
Anything else for Mike? Okay, moving on to item number five is discussion of possible action to accept a proposal from Crawford Company to relocate the drain valves on the geothermal circulation lines on the roof of the jail. Uh, Mike did mention that briefly and it was a pretty good summary on the change or the estimate from the Crawford Company about what the situation is. So any questions, comments, concerns?
So they're going to be, uh, just moved to a different location, walking out of the way? Is that what I'm understanding?
They're going to raise them. It's just going to be high enough that they'll clear the new roof.
Okay. And, and that'll be their permanent location then? They won't...
Yes, we're not moving them. We're just raising them.
Okay, okay.
Mike, um, so are we cutting in? Basically, we're just going to cut it like planks on each other side of these and then rotate about, uh, like a hundred and eighty degrees or something?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know exactly what they're planning to do. I can give some more detail on that. It looks to me essentially you have a small section of threaded rod, uh, that's the extension from the bottom. So there's a thread into the pipe at that flange and it's a thread into the valve. So what I suspect they'll be able to do is just get a shorter piece of threaded rod, pull the longer extension out, rethread that in, rethread the, uh, the valve off of that. So, I mean, literally, we're talking about three inches we need to get to make that work. I can give some more details on what they're planning to do.
Well, I mean, reading, reading on here, it basically says that we will need to cut some lines far back. We need to light the new fittings on the PVC line and then spin or spun upwards to clear it to the roof request. So I just didn't know there, I mean, basically that's kind of what it sounds like. They're going to cut the, all these nodes of the flanges on either side of these and then rotate them up. I don't know if it's going to rotate them up maybe ninety degrees, just enough to clear, but it's still built. Right, well, my assumption would be a hundred and eighty, so we'll be trying. That's fine. But that's, for what this is, this is pretty minimal, knowing what's going to add value to it at the end. So I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by Santos. I have a second by Scott. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion carries. Okay, Mike, I think that's all we have for you this morning, huh?
All right. Thanks, guys. Appreciate your time. And, uh, well, I will get with Oscar to get the, the stuff going on the rooftop and we will also start to let out some bids, uh, getting hot water going. So appreciate your time.
All right, thanks, Mike. Okay, item number six are items with the county engineer Keith White. Item number six is discussion of possible action to approve various utility permits. Good morning, Keith.
Good morning. We have one permit today from Eastern Iowa Light and Power, uh, Wilton, Iowa. And they are basically proposing to bore under New Era Road for a service for a new house at twenty-nine thirty-nine New Era Road.
I have a motion by Scott. Second by Doug. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You with us, Santos?
Yeah, I said aye. I'm on mute. My bad.
All right. I have an aye. Okay, oppose the same? Motion carries. Uh, do you have a project update this morning, Keith?
Yeah, there are two main projects, uh, up on, uh, F fifty-eight, Old Highway Six from Durant to Walcott. I said they're, Haggerty's finishing up on the last culverts over by Walcott, um, and, and the ditch. And then Manatz, who is the subcontractor for the subdrains, plans to start the middle of this week. And that's really kind of the last, uh, remaining item of work there. So that project, unless the weather severely changes, should stay on schedule. They'll probably, depends on when they get the asphalt patch on top of the, the last culverts, then they'll probably be open to, through traffic with some possible one-lane situations when they're doing subdrains. And then down on, uh, G twenty-eight, uh, higher paved up to, uh, Hickory Hills last week. And today, they're planning to pave past Seven Springs to the end of the, um, twenty-six-foot wide pavement. We, we started getting wider there and, uh, PCI will work ahead. Getting things ready and also working behind on shoulder ring. Questions on either of those?
Is everything going pretty well?
All things considered, going pretty well.
And we're still, when do we get down to the, because they haven't started down by Lutheran Homes yet and that's where it gets a little tricky here for staging.
Right, and again, we're, we're into, uh... Right, and, again, we're, we're into, uh, where we narrow up, we've hit a reconstruction area, so the, the going will be slower again, where we're not on top as they prepare ahead and hit the stages, but they're, they're coming along pretty well.
Good. Okay. Any other questions on that, or, do you have anything else this morning, Keith?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, item number seven is discussion of possible action to approve a renewal application for Class C native wine Sunday sales permit and outdoor service permit for Arden Creek Vineyard and Winery LLC doing business as Arden Creek Vineyard and Winery, twenty-three ninety-one Independence Avenue, Letts, Iowa.
Some of it.
I have motion by Nathan.
Second.
Second by Scott. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Santos, are you muted again?
His status says off, so I'm not sure what that means.
Okay. Uh, those opposed the same? Hearing none, motion carries, and I would put Betty that we didn't hear Santos on that one, so. Item number eight, discussion of possible action to approve the minutes of the August third, 2020 regular meeting.
With the approval.
I have a motion from Scott.
Second.
Second from Doug. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you hear Santos? Can't hear Santos. Santos, I don't know if you're still with us? Okay, so we have. Note, um, okay, item number nine is correspondence, we'll start with Doug this morning. Doug, do you have any correspondence?
The only correspondence I have is, uh, with Brian Wright, concerning fire rooms that were installed at Fair Ground, and I, a letter from Freedom Rock, uh, for the dedication on September sixth. Actual ceremony starts at one, but the River City Band starts at twelve fifteen, food and beverage at the junction of Howard Street, North Railroad Street, downtown Wilton. See as many people there as possible.
Scott?
Um, I received the same letter from Wilton in regard to the Freedom Rock dedication. Um, I also had a call from a resident that, uh, whose home is located in an area that's zoned heavy industrial, and the call was, uh, the area, uh, businesses and industries are working, uh, later, uh, it seems, and, uh, the question was if they can do that or not, and, uh, so I, I went and talked with Eric on that situation, and looked at, at what the choices may or may not be for a resident that his home happens to be in that situation, and, uh, this particular area has been zoned heavy industrial for fifty years or better, and the, the fact of the matter is, um, they can work around the clock, um, and that's just what heavy industrial does, so, uh, I conveyed that information to her, and that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. I had, uh, just the, uh, information on the Freedom Rock as well, and nothing else. Nathan?
Freedom Rock as well, uh, and, uh, no other correspondence.
Santos, did you join us again?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know what happened, it's just connected me and I had to call back in.
Okay, did you have any correspondence?
Yeah, I did, I did have a few. Um, I had a, another, uh, call from, uh, uh, city council and, and Brian Stein in regards to, uh, Highway, um, twenty-five, Twenty Fifth Street, and they were asking in regards to trying to get some information about potentially, um, would the county be interested or potentially entertain the idea of putting a, a weight limit on that little quarter mile of road? And I told them, I said, honestly, I think I thought we need to at least have a conversation with Keith, or county engineer, before I could really, you know, weigh in on it too much, knowing that their input, uh, on that road is concerning about the road conditions, thinking that driving too much of weight limits on it, so I told them to reach out to him on that, about, um, another, uh, email in regards to, uh, the potential bridge, um, on Highway twenty-two. Um, I also sent an email to, to Brian, once we got that, uh, potential funding from, from the state, uh, from the governor, and asking him if there was funds available for us on that, and he replied to me, letting me know that Sherry was already applying for that, and we should be able to u- utilize some of those funds, um, that we've already baked for COVID costs. Now, I got, uh, emails from Keith, appreciate that on, on Highway, uh, F-58. Uh, I also, um, went, um, over to the channel to look at, look at this roof earlier in the week, um, I had, uh, ran into Oscar and then scheduled something, and then ended up going actually with, uh, with, uh, maintenance guy Scott, uh, I believe, because Oscar was too busy, but I got a chance to go up on the roof to look at, uh, a little bit of the roof, and that's how I ended up asking those questions about the grounding, and got a little bit, I think I saw where these valves were going to go, that's where I was believing what it was going to be, but Oscar wasn't able to come up and look at it. Um, I think I've seen a lot of correspondence.
Uh, what about community reports? Did you have any committee reports last week?
No, I, I did not have any committees.
Okay. Nathan, did you have any committees?
I did, we had the Muscatine County Health Association meeting on Wednesday, November fifth, um, primary things discussed were, um, some membership activities and, uh, setting up the Muscatine Hunger Task Force.
I had no committee reports, Scott?
I had no committee reports.
And Doug?
No committee reports. I did want to mention though that we raced Saturday night, we had the late model race, we had a real good turnout for that, and August twenty-second, we're bringing those super late models to West Oates, so everybody can make that show, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Item number eleven, our items with the administration office, item eleven, is discussion of possible action to approve resolution oh eight ten twenty oh one, authorizing, authorizing and approving a loan agreement and providing for the issuance of a two million dollar general obligation county building improvement note and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
Do you want to talk about it a little bit, Sherry?
Yes, um, we put this current, uh, current year debt note out for bid with the local banks and institutions, we got one bid from CBI Bank and Trust with an interest rate of eleven point nine five percent, so this paperwork is to authorize us to go to enter that agreement with them.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, please.
I have a motion by Santos.
Second.
Second by Nathan. This is a roll, any further discussion? This is a roll call vote, Santos?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion carries. Item B is discussion of possible action, uh, regarding a timeline for opening county buildings to the public. Uh, okay.
Didn't City Hall open today officially?
I don't know.
Well, I heard it from you, so I don't know. If you're, if you're on church.
Saw it on Facebook, so I don't know.
Oh, must be true, then. So how's this, has, have we had any problems in terms of the public being able to access our agencies or anything like that? Any complaints?
We haven't received any formal complaints. There's, uh, times when there's a bottleneck at the front door, because people come up and don't realize, and, uh, you know, we still have the ones that cuss and kick and go in their car and leave and don't take the time to read the signs to know that they can call to make an appointment or do something on the phone, but for the most part, we've been, um, getting things taken care of, we're still, people are very much utilizing that Dropbox and, and, um, we're taking appointments every half hour, the phone rings off the wall, so it's been busy for us. I don't know, every day you ask, I can give you a different answer of whether we need to open or not, I just think now, we haven't certified property taxes yet, and that's picked up our phone volume, and there won't be a lot of people that come in to pay, that it's really not necessary. We're going to try to encourage them to drop their payments in the Dropbox, we mail out receipts on everything, um, to utilize the online account to pay, um, so that we just try to limit the number of people that need to come into the building, because that's the problem, once the doors open, we can't control where people go and, but, whatever we.
And I will say that I have received a couple of complaints, um, regarding the recorder's office, about nobody answering the phone and those sorts of things.
Yeah, and, uh, you know, I, I come here a few, intermittently, just throughout the week for signed papers or whatever, and, uh, typically we have, uh, I've found two to three every time I'm here at the front door, uh, generally frustrated, um, all kinds of issues, you know, people, you know, don't know who they need to talk to, I mean, that's kind of what we hear on the phone a lot as well, and, and, you know, I'm kind of of the, I think for the most part, uh, as I travel about town, I think people are being pretty responsible, uh, in their actions when there's situations where they can't socially distance, I think they're, for the most part, uh, masking and, and wearing masks and carrying masks, so I, you know, I feel like we've, we've kind of closed down for business for quite a while now, and I think it's probably time we consider opening up, and, so I would support opening the doors and opening to the public and see how it goes, we can always, you know, we meet every week, so if we wind up with some kind of a catastrophe, we can adjust and move forward if we have to, but, uh, I don't know how some of our other facilities, I know Eric, I mean, you get quite a bit of traffic, uh, how have things gone for you, and have you?
We have, we're, we go out and open the door, I mean, when people break plans or sketches they need, so we can, we need to be able to, to meet with, um, most of the contractors now to call ahead, sort of watch for them, but really it's getting a little more frequent that people don't, they don't deal with this day to day, just show up and then kind of have to guess that they're there and go get them, but honestly, we're doing countless traffic, it's just great to go out and let them in physically, so, I don't want to speak for anybody else in the building who knows what's concerned, but it would be a help some things.
Engineers office, Keith, you basically are, you have fairly limited traffic, don't you, at your desk as well?
Right, for more delivery drivers, dropping off the parts, we have very little foot traffic.
And Felicia, did I understand you're on the line this morning?
I am.
How are things in community service, and what's your take?
Um, we've got DHS in our building, and, um, we're doing by appointment, and we're doing collaborative appointments with MCFAs where we can, so that we don't have to shuffle people between buildings, they can actually come to one place. Um, in terms of opening up the building, we've got all the plexiglass up and all that sort of thing, so, um, we will still continue to mail out checks, we won't be, um, providing checks in hand when we go to do that, so it'll probably be limited to our general assistance vote.
So you don't see any large issues?
I, I really, I really don't at this point, we'll put up a sign that says they have to have a mask when they walk in, and, um, we'll see how it goes, if that's what you all want to do.
What kind of capacity do we have for the, the rigorous cleaning that is recommended after, um, uh, public places are open? And I guess I mean that generally at all of our facilities.
That's a question we would have, because right now, as we're walking people out, then we come back and clean the dust area before the next person comes in, wipe down the keypad, the pens, the counter, and that would be...
That'd be impossible with...
Yeah, and we would want to put some kind of a sign up that say, you know, we've got the four spots in front of the four clerks that, um, that they need to wait, and where do they wait, because then you get all of them standing in the hallway of the lobby, we don't have a lot of space now that Brian comes in and out of that door at the top of the stairs, you know, we could have them, have a couple more waiting spots there, but otherwise, they're all lined up there at the edge, we can tell them to line up down the hall, but that's not really six foot space in then if people need to go down the hall, I mean, those are, those are the challenges that we have, and, um, people are better about reading the signs and things because they're getting used to it, because you find them other places, but, you know, right at that doorway, we, we need to post something that if they're, they're not, if there isn't an opening, that they need to wait for the next available clerk or something, and we can't, we can't police it when they're busy with customers, they can't really...
Yeah, I'm really not interested in policing it, in, in asking people to, ask people to be respectful.
When are they going to be able to come in for absentee voting, Betty?
The first in-office voting is October fifth, we are getting a lot of people requesting ballots and wanting to come in and drop off forms, we just have them use your Dropbox, but when we have a citizen come in, we wipe down, and we have boxes of inexpensive big pens, and we just give them the pen and say, it's yours, and off they go with it.
Will we be offering any type of public hand sanitizer stations where they at least have the ability, the public to sanitize their hands? I know you see that in some of the businesses that you go in and they have them by the doors when they come in and, or leave.
How hard would it be to put one on every counter and then one by the doors?
I don't know that we have them, do we?
It's not something that we have on hand.
Last June, when we were, had, were open for voting for the primary, we had out by our door, we had a table, and it had a hand sanitizer with a note, please, you know, sanitize your hands before or after, and they had the opportunity to use a big, uh, hand sanitizer as they were coming in or leaving the office, it was just there on a table with a little sign work. Did they use it?
Did they use it?
I, you know, once they go out the door, they're sort of out of sight, but I think it was used, yes.
Yeah, I've, you know, I would say I've seen them around here and there, and I would say ten to fifteen percent of the people I see walk by, I'm using them, uh, but they're available. Uh, I would also say to Amy's point, most of the places I do that are dealing with, uh, cash or transactions, they are wiping down the appliances after the, you know, between, but typically it's a quick cleanup and off they go, um...
Yeah, it's quick, but we still have to go on the outside of the counter, you know, because of the, the way it's set up and the shields and stuff, and, and people don't wait to be called, they just step up if there's an opportunity, or stand in between where there isn't any shield, um, you know, it's, it's going to be a challenge one way or the other, but also...
Yeah.
But, and back to the question of the deep cleaning, um, without, i- if the expectation is that's going to happen from the general services crew, um, there's a lot of other stuff that's not going to get done, or we're going to...
They don't have the time.
Right, or we're going, we're going to be looking to hire more people.
They don't have the time.
Unless departments are, are going to handle it themselves like Amy's office is doing now.
I mean, it's one thing for you guys to do it after an appointment, it's quite another for you guys to make it a regular, multiple times a day practice, right? I mean, I think at a minimum, if and what, well, when we do reopen, we need to be following the, uh, we need to, to be following all the guidelines so that we can fall under the safe, uh, the safe harbor protections of Iowa law, uh, both for public safety and for our own, uh, financial security, and I don't know where we are in terms of our ability to do that right now. I mean, I tend to agree with you, Jeff, I think more openness is better, but I want to make sure we're not opening the door to, to something we shouldn't.
Well, one thing, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, 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 I was just going to say, I don't think we can reopen halfway, we have to either, it's all the way or none of the way.
Yeah. Uh, one thing I will say is, if you look at what's happened with the retailers to help, to help train the, the customers, the, the residents, um, example is, is the grocery stores, how, what a good job they have done to try to keep distancing and, and flows and so on, so, um, the retailers have, have really helped to, to train the masses on this, so, if you have some, some guidelines, some guidelines or rules and regulations, it won't be foreign to the public, it won't be foreign, they're, they, they've worked a few months at, at being, um... It won't be foreign. They've worked a few months at being, following these directions. So I think that's a positive point of this. I also am inclined to agree with Jeff in that I think, I think that you just have to make some decisions and, and need to move forward. And with this board meeting every week, if there's something that needs addressed or doesn't work or whatever the case may be, it can be changed quickly. But I don't know what the, what the thought process is. If, if we're going to wait until there is how many cases or no cases or what's the thought process on when some different individuals should start or shouldn't start, you know, I just.
Yeah, I mean, I, everything I see, I mean, you know, you get so many confusing directions. But I think the state's guidance, if I'm not mistaken, Brian is, and I don't know if Christie's on this morning, is still, it's social distancing, mask if you can't maintain social distancing, frequent and thorough hand washing. That's kind of the guidance. And, and so I think that would be good. I don't. Sherri, would we be able to, Nancy, maybe would, getting hand sanitizer like available at the stations like for the customer side, I'm not thinking for the employees. And hopefully we've got things there. Would, could we do something like that in a timely fashion? I mean, how long? Do we have any idea? Is it still hard to get?
I don't think so now. What we'd have to figure out is what that station looks like because with the issue of trying to social distance folks in our front entryway, we don't want to put up a very big table and take up a space. And we.
Ours was a small table right up against.
And we previously had talked about at the start of this about buying stations that you mount like by the front door. Our concern is during regular business, there's a lot of people that come in with children and leave the children in the lobby while they go do their business at the treasurer's office. Where we spend a fair amount of time getting kids off the steps and we're concerned with a hand sanitizer. We're going to have a big mess out there. I think we, I think the sanitizer, if we're going to do, put out sanitizer, I think it might make more sense to have it at the counters of the offices.
I've seen those little stations, the stand-up station and just put those by the window stations so that people have them available to use. And you're, you know, policing it. I don't expect people to police it because you're going to have some compliance and some aren't going to comply, but at least we can make the effort to do it.
I would, I would look at the dispensing units that they are either, they adhere to a surface be by contact. They don't necessarily have to be screwed to a, to a surface. And you'd be able to take and get those high enough to keep little children from being involved in that. And, and you just, yeah, you just run it with the palm of your hand. And it's a foaming type product. And I would take a look at what, what that possibility might be.
Even if we just have one near the front door and one near the back door, I don't think it's really necessary to have them at every, every station. And I would just ask that, I foresee us certifying taxes next week or this week. Hopefully, I'm waiting for the outsourced company, but hopefully by the end of the day today, I'll have that file be able to do and then get a mail date, which I am looking at. By the end of next week, they'll all be out mailed out. But that gives me time to put a press release in the Discover paper that, you know, we're, we're looking at opening. We're asking everybody for patience and understanding. If you're just making your payment, please still try to mail it in, pay online, drop it in the box. We'll mail out receipts. We've asked people even making appointments, you know, that they limit the number of people. We're asking us to limit it to just one if possible, but of course there are people that are single parents that have their children. But we tell them when they come in there to keep their children with them and, and, you know. And, and as you said, I think they are learning these habits that are required in other places. So I would just say we might need until next week to get this in order and get signage to put up about where they're supposed to wait, maybe have some better understanding.
Yeah, I would think that we'd look at something around the 24th would make sense to me that you'd say you'd open up around the 24th.
That would give us time to send.
Try to get some of those things in place and also to communicate what the requirements will be. You know, the ones I hate were, you know, I read it and they're going to make, change the rules and it's tomorrow. It's like, well, wait a minute, I haven't had an opportunity to adjust my process.
Well, and I would hate to open and then have to turn around and close the following week because that just confuses people all the more. Because right now the calls we're getting are, are you open yet? And so, you know, that, that's a little easier than, oh yeah, we are, but we're not, so.
Well, I guess I would like to see, again, I agree with Tom, but I would like to see a, a clear written policy as to what we're going to do, not just say we're going to reopen, but something that, you know, is reviewed that in for legal compliance with state and federal guidelines. And it sets clear expectations for staff, both, you know, our, our general services staff and our, you know, the folks working at each station, whether it's a treasurer or whatever office, as well as for the public so that, you know, everything is clearly defined. And that way, you know, we want to minimize, I think, ambiguity and reduce the chance for confusion in any of it. And I think that having something in writing that we put out ahead of time is going to be very important.
Well, and I agree with Nancy too. She commented on the Recorder's Office and the hours. We're here from eight to 4:30 in our office. We have a lot of people that come in with boats and trailers and we do the trailer and they do the boat. And there's a lot of confusion about that because they're gone, nobody's there to answer when they can get that done. And we try to coordinate best, but we just tell them, we have to contact them and make the arrangements. And, and that does get kind of, I think everybody needs to be available during our working hours whether we're open to the public or not.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. Okay.
So if, if you guys agree with Nathan and the written policy, I can try to have something put together for you guys' approval next week. Like I said.
I would want Jim to vet it as well, just to make sure we qualify in his judgment under the, the safe harbor.
And I will try to get that done by next week. I'm going to tell you, I got to work comp on it. We have state audits, auditors coming. But I'll do the best I can to have that back in front of you next week. I, I don't know if that affects the date that you want to consider, if you want to push back another week because, because, for that, because that policy.
Yeah, I mean, if you're able to get it, then.
And I think we should look for the 24th as being a date. Does that make sense to the board?
If possible, yeah, unless, unless we have.
It does as long as we get our prep work.
Yeah.
I'll try to have a policy to you next week and we'll either have sanitizer stations or know when they're coming by then, so.
Awesome.
Good, okay. Do we need anything else on this item? Do we need a formal action or anything, Nancy?
No, at this point I think you're just given direction and you can take formal action next week.
Okay.
Thanks.
Now, do we want to put these hand sanitizer stations like in the zoning lobby, nears lobby?
Maybe we figure out how many we need.
I think probably in other buildings if they don't already have one.
Probably community services. We should make sure Felicia's got them.
Sure, but you have.
Our traffic is so minimal compared to like Amy's. I went out and bought one for employee side and it lasts.
Eric just hoses them down.
As Matt's.
Okay. All right. So anything else this morning with the administration office?
Um, yes, one thing, we need to get performance evaluation scheduled for the individuals that report directly to the board. So, and ideally we prefer to do that when we can have all five board members. So I need each of you to let me know if there's any Mondays that you're planning to be gone in the next month and a half or so.
Okay. Did everybody hear that? Santos, did you hear that?
Yeah, okay. I don't have anything that I should be able to make up since we're.
Yeah, if you, if you have anything.
Anything to mention on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, I know you proposed the 24th and I was wondering if maybe we should just put it as the 25th so we know we can have our meeting and everything is prepared for the 25th and open versus the 24th.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we were going to discuss it on the 17th, right?
Yeah.
So have everything prepared to 17th, so that still give us a week. So, yeah, I don't care, one way or the other. 24th, 25th, 17th, 19th, all days.
Okay.
Good, thanks. Okay. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Administration? Okay. Next item is to receive information from county employees. Any county employees that have an issue for the, Brian, good morning?
I'm just going to give you an update on Muscatine County's COVID-19 numbers. And these are as of yesterday, Sunday, August 9th. We did have one positive case for a total of 846. There had been zero deaths. We do have a total of 48 of the positive cases. 733 have recovered. And there has been 6,825 tests conducted in Muscatine County. So roughly our numbers appear to be holding somewhat steady. I haven't really heard from my public health, Christie, Robie Williams, if we've had a substantial spike or not. But roughly you're looking probably about 113 cases right now.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Any other county employees have anything? Bill?
Morning. I wanted to give you an update that we have moved most of our virtual servers over to the new host systems. That's going well. We did have a server failure last night about 6:00 PM. Was able to get most of that resolved by roughly 10:30 last night. We're still working, getting a few things. It was a domain controller. So far there doesn't seem to be any issues with people logging in, machines being blocked or anything like that. So if there were any issues, they haven't notified my office as of 9:00.
Good.
Any questions or anything?
Thank you, Bill.
I'm just, Nancy, can you refresh my memory where we are on the zoning commission vacancy?
We, it's posted on the website. It hasn't run in the papers again yet.
We, we still need to backfill one of the positions that was made vacant by the change in the state code. Our meeting on Friday, we knew we were only going to have three people because one was going to be absent out of the plan. We have a vacant. One of our members was in a minor car accident that morning. They were able to join us by phone. There was no other people in attendance under the applicant. So I felt that it was okay to go ahead and continue, but they ended up tabling because of the issues that creates with a positive or, you know, negative vote on, on things like that. They wanted to wait in hopes that there'd be more, complete more, but it does create issues when we only have three members. We nearly didn't have four, so we do need to find some.
I've had some, a couple of meetings in the last month with resident groups, rural resident groups. And I have mentioned to all of them that they need to pay attention to the postings because we're going to need some help with the new law. It must be somebody that resides in unincorporated areas of the county. And so hopefully we'll get some applicants, good applicants this time. So look forward to that getting posted and if any board member to make sure to send that out to all the groups that we're in, anybody we're involved with to try to get help because it does, you don't want to slow the progress of our planning and zoning efforts in the county, certainly. Okay. Anything else, Eric? Okay, item number 13 is to receive comments from the public. Is there a member of the public who wishes to address the board on an issue? Bill, do you have anyone on the phone this morning?
Uh, there's two people and they're both self-muted, Don B and a CP.
Oh, did you, Don B, that's Don Briggs, and if you, did you, have we made a progress at the Discovery Center?
Yes. You still, you sent, he sent me an email telling me the phone, that's.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We're waiting for Lewis Communications to install another card in the phone system so that we have an available port on the phone system. And we do have the conference phone in-house that they will install at the same time.
Okay, so we have the hardware. They're just trying to schedule to get the port put into our switch out there so we can get it going. Okay. So we would expect that within the next seven to 10 days, I would think.
They're supposed to have it done this week. I just haven't heard any from them this morning.
Okay, very good.
So do you, do you want to go ahead and schedule a meeting time?
I would feel more comfortable that we've had it in place and we could test it.
Okay.
Then maybe I can work with Bill and we could do a little.
Yeah, we'll hopefully get it back. If it gets installed this week, we'll get it back on the agenda for next week.
Okay. There, did anybody from the public, please, if you're, you're going to unmute everybody, Bill?
I haven't muted anyone.
Okay, so we see a couple callers in that are muted. If you wish to make a comment, please unmute yourself. And make, anybody, okay, hearing no comments. Meeting is adjourned.